...is September 16, 2009, but we have one item on the agenda and that is to look at, talk about, the urban and rural reserves designation. And I guess I'm going to kick this off first. As you may or may not know, Doug Neely is the representative to the local Policy Advisory Committee, so he's been working at the county level, and then I'm a member of the Regional Policy Advisory Committee, working at the regional level. And so, where we are in the process is, just to kind of refresh your memory, we've got three designations, the most restrictive being rural. If something is in a rural reserve, it is to remain unchanged for 50 years. So essentially locked, in a lockbox, to use Al Gore's phrase. Secondly, then there are lands which may be undesignated, and those will continue on in the form in which they exist. The third designation is urban reserves, and those lands may not be upgraded until they are brought into the urban growth boundary. So, those are some, a quick and dirty overview. Is that anything on that?
Well, I was going to mention, if property is undesignated, it cannot change to urban unless all the urban land in Metro area is responded.
Okay.
So the chances of an undesignated area going urban in 50 years is probably low.
It is an absolute like that?
Yes.
Yes, that's an absolute.
Yes, but that can be changed if another process similar to what this one has been happens. So let me tell you, the discussion at the regional table, because it's really relevant to what we're going to talk about too, but we want to hone down because we don't have much time here, and we need to launch this process. Because the county has already made some designations for us, we need to get to that. But first of all, one of the questions that we'll be wrestling with at the regional table is, what is the use of designated lands? In Clackamas County, the undesignated lands are those essentially adjacent to urban areas, to urban reserves, and they are those lands that if we're wrong about the population projections, you know, could be urbanized through another process. And Clackamas County has clearly applied the factors, remember those nine factors, that you look at to see whether a land should be designated urban, rural, or undesignated. Washington County, so in Clackamas County, the typical look will be, there's a city, and then there's a ring of some urban designations, not very many, Clackamas County only has about 8,400 acres designated, and then there will be a large strip of undesignated around it. In Washington County, it's very, very different. There will be a city, there will be a large piece of urban reserve, right smack up against rural reserves. So, the question of what undesignated really means is going to be a very hot topic. And then, Washington County also has designated 34,000 urban acres, and with Clackamas County at 8,400. And then the CEO, Michael Jordan, just issued his report yesterday, which we'll all be discussing, it's just a quick and easy read, I'll be reading it in the airplane in the morning, what, 78 pages. Yeah, it says that we want to tie UGB, and we probably don't want, he's recommending less, way less land than that total acreage. All of that is relevant to what we do here. So where we are in the process is that we're a little behind, but changes can be made to all of the designations. Doug and the PAC at the county level have studied each of these areas, as they were supposed to, and made recommendations, majority and minority recommendations, and reasons for their, reasons for their reasoning, and then that has all, I think, been sent out to you. So, when you look at Oregon City's map, and this is a...
This is a handout.
That's not the map I want. That's the one I want. Is that, that's not our, that's not our designation, okay.
That's a county.
Yeah, this is the county map, okay. So if you recall, we looked at all of the lands, pretty much around Oregon City, to determine their suitability for, in our case, mostly inclusion in urban reserves. So I want to talk about each of them, and tell you where the controversies may or may not lie. Because tonight would be really nice to have some kind of consensus on, you know, where we go with this.
And the reason why, because on September 23rd, all the counties are going to be reporting to Metro on the recommendation.
Yep, so that doesn't mean, again, that we can't be tweaked, because I've asked the county to please let Oregon City weigh in. So, that's got to happen very quickly.
They're applying decisions in December 2000.
Right. And that'll be the committee, the core forum makes that recommendation, but they will look at what our committee says, at the regional level, and of course, the counties are, their voice is very, very important. And I did speak on what I'm going to talk about tonight, on these designations, at the county hearing, so I'll tell you all that.
Just briefly, is there going to be another, if we made any significant changes in our, in recommendations versus this, are they, do they have another meeting planned to address that?
No.
Or are we that far behind?
We're that far behind, but Dan and I have both been in contact with the planning departments, and I've been in contact with the county commissioners, and they know that we're weighing certain things. I'll tell you, I'll tell you which ones they are. Okay, the areas that have general agreement, those little areas south of the city, they're essentially some willing landowners, it's what I would call the hard edge south of Oregon City. It drops off very steeply in that area, and these, the only controversial thing here is, that in the first map, it was a smaller area, because what we did was draw lines on top of the ridges. But someone remembered that those weren't lot, those weren't lot lines, and so, the planning department says, it's extremely complex and messy to cut through the middle of someone's property. So we, I credit the planning department, Tony Conkle particularly, since Dan was gone this time, butting with the planning department for drawing those lot lines, so that's what we have submitted now, and the southern section are lot lines, so that the landowners don't have to have uncertainty about their properties. The other, then Commissioner Bernard and Commissioner Leahan, who are very much in the forefront of working on this piece in the county, we drove throughout, many, many miles throughout here, to look at some of the areas that they had questions about. So when we, we, the only piece of the Beaver Creek area at all that's, that we think should be urbanized, is the area just north and south of Beaver Creek Road. It's about one lot south of Beaver Creek, excuse me, Henreese Road. And the reason that that is, is there, and we all agreed, is that it looks like any other street in Oregon City that doesn't have sidewalks. It's very urbanized already. It makes sense, those sewer, many of those sewers are expected to fail, they're of that age, and that just makes sense. It's a tiny little strip, and I might point out that it's three miles from Henreese Road to the Beaver Creek, center of Beaver Creek township, Hamlet actually. So then...
I wanted to mention, that's consistent with Metro's recommendation that just came out today.
Yes, yes, that urbanized area. Okay, then, we move up to the top, so move up here, to this section, and we drove two sections. We drove what I call the Holcomb section, which actually would begin about here. So it cuts, so this whole thing that looks like the brain at the top is Forsyth Road, and I want to talk about that first. When we drove Forsyth Road, it, it has a very rural feel. It's up at the top of a flat plateau, it's disconnected from the city. I know that the planning department, someday we would like, Forsyth Road will need safety improvements and upgrades, but in my view, and our recommendation is, that the county not include that, that whole upper section that surrounds Forsyth, it's difficult to serve with transportation right now. And we can meet our future needs in other ways. However, we are, so, the county currently has it in, because the PAC, I think, thought that that was okay, but I'd like to take it out. So that's my recommendation to you, on the table for discussion. Secondly, that's not the case, though, with the Holcomb area that's right here. It is more parcellized, it's easier to serve, because it's not quite as disconnected, and it's a small little area, so it's this, this little section right here.
The stem of the brain.
The stem of the brain, yeah, exactly, the module. And then, the next section I want to talk about is this here. And first of all, I want you to, this is Newell Creek Canyon, and this is Holly Lane, and I want you to observe that it is, that all around it, on three sides are already developed, it's the city of Oregon City. This, and I have been a proponent of leaving Newell Creek Canyon out for a long time, and all of my friends in the environmental community have said, greater protection outside the city than in. And I brought this up at the regional level, and even Mike Houck of Urban Naturalist, and Mary Kyle McCurdy, a thousand friends, now agreed that, in this particular state, the county's not going to, we just lost me, the county is not going to be giving it as any protection, because it's almost an island, and surrounded by the city of Oregon City. Now, there are two, we have two areas of, the county has designated this as an urban reserve, for protection by Oregon City. And I talked with the county, and what they would like to do is asterisk it, that Newell Creek Canyon continued to be preserved, I agree. And furthermore, it was suggested to me, and the county has concurred, and planning staff likes it too, that we develop an IGA with the county, so there can't be massive tree cutting on those properties, as they might be considered to be included in the urban area. So that we would talk about mitigation, or lack of, anyway, to try to protect the trees and the property in other environmental ways. So there's that possibility of that happening there. Now, the disagreement comes with...
Allison, there's another map that's easier to see.
It's sort of, depends on the different rules.
Well, it's this Area 4, and it's in this blue-purple color.
It's Area 4?
Yeah.
Oh, that's different.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Area 5.
No, it's either Area...
Area 5.
It's Area 3, what?
Oh. No, but she's going to talk about the disagreement.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about the disagreement now. And that is between...
That is actually Area 4.
It's Area, isn't it? It's Area 3.
No. 3 is Newell Creek.
No, 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 I'm going to talk about Newell Creek. No, I'm still in Area 3, Newell Creek, excuse me, I wanted to talk about the area of disagreement, because Commissioner Neely and I have, are disagreeing on that. Okay, the county's designated it urban, I have wanted it rural, except for now, I believe, is an opportunity for Oregon City, because I think it's going to be a neglected island. And so if we can have those environmental protections in place, then I'm going to, I will, it was on, sorry. Okay, are we, are we on? Then I will likely, I will support the urban designation, because again, it's an island, surrounded by us, and we need to be very, very sure that our codes protect this precious area. I think Newell Canyon is a extremely treasure for us. Now, Holly Lane, because it doesn't just include Newell Creek Canyon, so the only danger for the canyon comes off of Holly Lane, which slopes down toward the canyon. So in Doug's original, and I guess the PAC's recommendation, is that just a little strip of Holly Lane was urbanized, and again...
No, 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 that's not right.
That was in the original.
Are you talking about just Newell Creek, or are you talking about...
No, no, I'm talking about Holly Lane now, just Holly Lane. You had a small strip, and they, and one of the, where the issue is with having just a strip of Holly Lane be urban, because Holly Lane is unsafe, and will need to be developed to urban standards soon, and where does the funding come from? It comes from development on it. But again, if you draw a small strip, you're cutting through the lot lines. Now, to the east of Holly Lane, it drops off very, very steeply, so there really is only a strip along Holly Lane that is developable. But again, to cut across those owners' lot lines doesn't make sense. We have some of the strictest deep slopes, ordinances, and codes in the state, I think, and so hopefully, we can be guaranteed that that, that we can protect those lands. So, the controversy comes, though, and Doug, if you want to talk about it yourself, Doug is concerned about that if we annex...
Did I talk about what I was...
Yes, would you talk about your own concerns? Sure, please.
I was just going to say...
Talk about your own concerns.
Thank you very much. There's really two of them. The first one is, if we annex them in, they're going to pay city rates for property. Now, one could argue, well, maybe our conservation easement program and so forth will address this particular problem. Right now, we don't know how that's going to work, and how it occurs. But, the issue is, you're not going to be providing city services to people, and there are a few residents at the bottom of the canyon, you're not going to be providing city services to them. They're on, some of them are in very large parcels, there, some of them you'd actually have a difficult time providing those services for, they're not going to be developed to urban standards whatsoever. The second point is that it is possible that some of those property owners, in fact, look at the property they have as income generating property. That is, they may in fact, cut timber on those properties, and if we impose a tree ordinance in which that could not happen in those particular areas, you'd be essentially doing a taking on their economic benefit.
When I checked with the state forester, that's not true. That the state ability to harvest land prevails.
In or without us, in or without.
Well, I'm, that prevails over county jurisdiction.
Let's check it out.
I've been told by the attorney, that we had the ability to do, to put those restrictions on, the county did not.
Right.
And so I don't, I don't think what you're saying there is true.
Okay, we'll check it out.
This has come up, actually, this has been, come up in discussions where Ed Sullivan has actually discussed that, when we were talking about it.
Okay, we need an answer.
So we need an answer to that. Those are the two major concerns I had. Once, one is the residents who are down there are not going to get urban services anyway, and they get, if they get taxed at a, at a city rate, it's going to be something that they're not going to get services for. The other being the question of economic viability to the property owner.
Yeah, yeah, let's have a staff response to that. What do you know about that? Because I asked the question so we could try to figure out what that means. Tony, run.
Well, one thing we did is, we looked at the lots in Newell Creek Canyon, and a lot of them are owned by Metro.
About 800 acres, isn't it?
Yes, so that's moot point for closed parcels. And then the other thing that we talked briefly about was that, we don't have to annex this just because it's in, is an urban reserve, so that gives us however long we want to address the taxation issue and the harvesting issue.
And I guess if I could just add real quick...
You need a microphone, Tony. Just pull it out. Yeah, I can hear it. Thank you.
So what, this is the same map that you have in front of you, and what this shows is, what we did is, we went through, and we took out all the Title 13 lands, took out all the right-of-ways, took out all the steep slopes greater than 25 percent, took out lots that are less than an acre, and that have a home on them. We also took out, what you'll see are swaths that are either PG or Highline, high-part wire right-of-ways, but focusing on Newell Creek Canyon, we also took out all the pieces that are owned by Metro, they have a star on them on your map. And what you see in the green areas then, within your Area 3 study area, are the lands that don't meet one of those criteria. So technically, they meet the criteria that they are potentially developable. And what you see are, you know, several large lots, and then up around the, right adjacent to the city, have several small lots. You have, you have a grouping of about 10 that range in size from, you know, probably 3,500 square foot to probably around 8,000 square foot. And I guess going back to Commissioners Neely's concern about, if any of those are on septic right now, and they fail, because they're within 300 feet of the city, let them stand with choice but the hook to the city sewer. You also, at the end of Morton Road, right in this area, you have the B&amp;B leasing yard. So it's not even, you know, it's used as a commercial use right now. So you start to, you start to see in several of these areas where, you know, it is, you've got quite a few of those that are urban, in terms of land use size and having a single-family home. We didn't have enough time to go back and look and see if they're on septic right now, or what their sewer situation is. But just based on the size of a lot of these, you know, they're so small that they're either utilizing a septic field or a tank, and you run into that same issue here with, you know, lifespan of those things, they're 30 to 40 years, and you start to run into failure issues. But so that kind of addresses, you know, some of the parcelization of this area.
Tony, those green areas at the top, were those planned as part of the Park Place Concept Plan?
The green areas at the top, right here?
Nope. Bring your hand, a little bit more.
Up higher, to the left.
Right there.
This is, here's, here's 213, right here. So this is on the west side of 213, this was not part of the Park Place Concept Plan? None, actually, none of the areas we're looking at were part of the Park Place Concept Plan? Because we only did things that are urban growth boundary.
Okay, in the interest of, the PAC will only have three minutes left, let me just give you the last piece, that you need to know. The last piece is that somehow, a piece of what was studied dropped off the county map, and it's essentially this white area right here. And it is, this is Waldo Acres, the Country Village Trailer Park, this, this one?
Yep.
Okay, got it, everybody? And then this is just beyond that, it actually makes a nice little border here, it's easily served, fits all the factors, and so, we're recommending that it, we think that the PAC recommended it too. The commissioners, for some reason, believed that they'd never saw it before, it wasn't studied by the people. So, two things. We're going to recommend that that be an urban reserve, and this is not. And Dan will talk about the net acreage here. And then, I also would like to, when we, we're going to talk about it tonight, the city council, city commission meeting also, that we hold it over for, well, we have to recommend to the county, but hold it over for real adoption by the city for a couple weeks, so that we can allow for citizen input on this, because it's the first time it's really been aired here. Okay, Commissioner Nacita, or Jim, Jim I guess, because that should be...
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We're all commissioners. Except you.
Couple of questions, one for Dan. This, on 213, above Newell Creek Canyon, there's another little circular area.
Everyone's talking about there.
What is that, is that again? The white, why, why is, why is it...
It's essentially part of the watershed and the canyon area. It's the little north part of, of Newell Creek, this one here.
Okay.
The hat.
Got it. And what was the, again, the area that you were mentioning, Alice, regarding this year?
This wide area, yeah, essentially that.
Okay, and what is out there right now?
It's fairly easy, developable flatland, there's some areas of urbanization, but it's a, it's a easily served area, it connects with our city nicely in that section. That being the 50-year plan? It doesn't, I mean, it, it does not go down along this border, and it does not go on the, what creek? This creek, this watershed here, I've forgotten what it is. I'm not sure that's Abernathy, but anyway, but it's just this little part right here.
Okay.
With those Thimble, Thimble, Dabernathy.
May I, for quarter, I'm just going to pass this, well, no, you can refer to page 17.
We have it.
You have it, page 17. And I'm going to ask Mayor Norris, if in fact, the area that they left off is on this map, or not in U6.
Yeah, that's it, that's it, only ours is smaller than that.
The point is, it is within that area. This is in fact, what the, this is what the Policy Advisory Committee saw.
Yes.
Now, I do want to read what the majority vote was on.
Sure.
Specifically, it says, designate close-in flatter areas, including around Holly Lane, as urban reserve. So that would include areas around Maple Lane, and also Thayer Road. So that was the recommendation, as I said, that would have taken Newell Creek Canyon, and also the steep areas on, on both sides of Holly Lane, and it drops off dramatically on both sides of Holly Lane, not only Newell Creek Canyon, but on the other side, would have taken them out of the rural reserve category. We also have, of course, steep slopes throughout the Thimble Creek area, where it runs into, where it runs into Abernathy Creek and so forth. So if you look at that U6, you'll see, you can see the steep contours there, but you can also see where the flat areas are. And although it's difficult to see, there is a, right along that ridge of Holly Lane is where it is sort of flat, before it drops off.
So to reiterate, where the changes on the map are, take out the brain, the Forsyth Road area, add the little white area, and then they, you know, the area that we really haven't determined is what to do with the Newell Creek Canyon area, is that urban, rural or, well, actually, is urban or undesignated? Those are the only two, I think. The county has it as, as urban, and I think they're pretty strongly...
So does Metro.
And Metro, they're very strongly wanting that because of environmental protection.
The other thing is, the Metro code prohibits rural islands.
Okay. Question that I was going to ask about Newell Creek Canyon, and I don't know what, I have no information on this, and maybe there isn't. Would the designation as an urban reserve for Newell Creek Canyon preclude Metro from, for example, purchasing it as they did Kinnima Bluff?
No, no, they've continued to buy in there, and they, I think, plan to. So I think, so we need, we need to decide whether we concur with, I guess, we're putting the recommendations on the table. Dan, you want to quickly go over the population projections, because that's another sort of overlay that we are looking through, besides the factors.
Yeah. We'll give you the really brief summary, there's a, there's a projection in your PAC, a 60-year population projection, and, and I use 1.5 percent, which is the same number, it's actually the middle range that Metro's using in there.
Growth rate.
Growth rate, they have a low and a high, and I picked right in the middle, which is 1.5. And unbelievably, the areas that, that Alice is recommending, when you, when you look at the net developable areas, acreages in all those areas, it could accommodate 19,800 people, and that's assuming a pretty high density, that's assuming eight units an acre, net density.
And that's outside the urban growth boundary.
Yes, that's, that, these are just the areas that we've been discussing, and it also, it includes the Holly Lane area, includes that U6 area that somehow dropped off the county maps, but that we're proposing to include, includes all those areas, and it, but it does not include, as Mayor Norris calls the brain, we excluded that. So when you, when we run the numbers, we find that in the year 2058, if everything, every empty piece of property in the city, all our UGB areas developed between eight to 10 units an acre, and these new areas that they all developed, at eight units an acre, we'd be right at the projection. So we're, we're pretty much right on target.
Okay, comments, questions, in the last little bit, Chris?
So you mentioned that Newell Creek Canyon would have a better, stronger environmental protection with a, with a urban reserve?
Yes.
Versus the rural, which seems...
Counterintuitive.
It does.
It does, but...
Can we explain that? So is that just within the planning codes and conditions to protect that? I mean, how does, how is it stronger than saying it's rural, I guess?
Because if it remains rural, it will remain in the county for 50 years. People can continue to do as they do right now with it. It doesn't change.
Right, right. Which have looser planning codes, basically.
Exactly.
Not basically flat out, okay. I get it, thank you.
I mean, if you wanted to go a little bit more, I don't know that this is our plan at all, but if we wanted to build paths and trails in there, we might be precluded from doing that, because it's not our, not our property, just sits there, rests. Doug?
The other area that you mentioned is an area of concern I'd like to really come back to, and that's the northeast area, Park Place area. Forsyth Road, it would be very challenged to bring it up to urban standards, and I toured that area on my own, and as Mayor Norris did with, you had the commissioners going in there?
Yeah, I had Jim in Charlotte with me.
You know, it, even where we, even where it's essentially in the city, if you take a look at the tremendous drop off that exists on one side, and then you look at our water treatment site on the other, it's going to be very difficult to urbanize that road. The current map, I think, includes that. A recommendation I put forward that didn't, that was very much a minority vote, was to designate the entire urban area except Clackamas River drainage, which basically would have fallen into the Abernathy Creek drainage. The difficulty with putting that forward, there's no specific recommendation of what areas in that area could in fact be developed to urban standards, but one thing I'm going to probably put forward is that we exclude the Clackamas River drainage from that particular area, and, and look at areas further up Holcomb Road, for example, for the, for the increased urban development.
How's that, how's that different than this, than the recommendation?
Well, right now, right now, it extends...
Well, right now, right now, it extends into the, some of that's in the Clackamas River drainage.
Some of, some of this?
Hold it.
Yeah, so I'm about the same map.
Okay.
I don't think so, I think it's, I think it drains the other direction. That's why, that's why Forsyth there is out.
Forsyth is out, but, well, I'll just ask the planning staff, is that area that's there exclusive of the Clackamas River drainage?
In the map, yes, it is.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what we thought, too. Okay, other concerns, questions?
I was going to say.
Tony? Can you grab the map?
This was the original.
I mean, the microphone, pardon me. Mic map, M word.
Say, this was the original line we had talked, when you and I and the mayor met concerning this. This was the addition that was the response from the Clackamas County Commissioners that they added. So we put this in just to run the numbers and show what was proposed versus what the city had.
Yeah, I think this proposal protects the watersheds, protects some of the fragile areas, and keeps Oregon City a more compact form. I guess I understand how cities can grow, I mean, I think it keeps it short and fat rather than long and thin, which, again, building community to layer on and affirm what Doug is always talking about is hugely important. And I know that how you do that in a bigger city like ours is you build strong neighborhoods, but we have to have the capacity to do that. So Daphne, and then Tim.
So, this map, the white area here is basically the pink area up there?
No.
No.
No. It's.
That's the same, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So what are we proposing?
Here, it's right here, it's right here. This little bit right here is what we're adding.
She's asking about this area.
Oh, no, it's this, okay, cuts off right here and adds this essentially.
Okay. I thought you were.
No, no. See?
I thought you were talking about the Clackamas.
No, 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 we're, this, we're, sorry, we can't see it. Do we have that map up there? That's the one we need. Yeah, that's way easier. Can you draw a map? Here, let me draw a map. May I? There's a bit of pen, okay. We're talking about this, nothing here.
Okay, got it, got it, got it.
And then the area that is added is essentially kind of, I don't remember the boundary exactly, it's sort of like that, just right here. This, this wide area, we would include, and that's what the recommendation is. And then, you know, this is urban or undesigned, so. But the county commissioners, I'm, I'm pretty sure over, unless we really strongly object, likely will do that. And I think that with protections in place, as I mentioned, and then answering, getting at Doug's question, maybe there are ways to evade that.
All right. Alice, are you saying that unless we object, the commissioners will remove the brain of?
Oh, this, I think they will honor, I, I think, what do you think? I think they'll honor our discussion. I've lobbied them strongly enough, and the driving out there, I think they'll, I think they'll honor that. This is the questionable piece, actually, because the planning, the county planning staff remembers the discussion, and we remember the discussion, however, it's, the commissioners somehow feel there hasn't been public input on this piece. So I think I've gotten them tenderized to listen to what we say tonight, so, let's Any other comments, questions? I'd like to sort of, affirmative, negative remarks, too, on, on, on direction, because as I said, we're at the 11th hour.
I'm, I'm not real convinced yet on the Forsyth, south or north of Forsyth. As I drove it today, it seems to me that everywhere from Bradley all the way to Sears Farm is actually pretty, pretty flat, pretty nice area up there for development. Now, I understand the transportation piece, but the real, the real downside of that transportation piece is through the canyon coming up from Clackamas River. That's really where the issue is, and I, and I guess, you know, we have a lot of those. We have, we have many of those, South End Road, and as you know, so, so I don't want, I don't want to throw it out just because of transportation. I mean, I, I think that's a very valuable piece, and I think that could be something, there could be some development there. While I think transportation is important, it does meet a lot of the other criteria. And I, and I do think it's a rural setting, clearly, but I don't think it's completely a rural setting.
It's way more, when you, when you drive the two, the flavor of the Holcomb area, that, the strip below it, and, and that, are very different. You know, I guess, in my mind, that's the next 50 years. It is flat, but there's certainly some challenges getting up the hill.
Oh, oh, no doubt.
Yeah. Doug?
I guess I have a major concern when we move in from one watershed into another. That's exactly what we'll be doing. We have issues with, of course, stormwater issues and so forth, and yes, we try to address them with detention ponds, but especially when you're dealing with the resource life of Clackamas River, my preference is to not go into that drainage, well, I'll say, over an infinity period of time.
Yeah.
And we're not, we're not worried about that. We're talking about the next 50 years, and I think we should avoid jumping into new, new drainage systems, frankly.
The fallback designation likely would be undesigned.
That was my question.
I actually wanted to ask Doug a question, because you've been the most connected to the folks at Beaver Creek over the course of the last several months on all of this.
Yeah.
What is their view of this urban reserve designation along Henrissi, and what is your, what are your feelings about it?
By far, and I didn't vote with it, but by far, but the vast majority is to not declare any of that as urban reserve, and that includes on both sides Henrissi Road.
Okay.
Henrissi Road is really going to be a red flag.
Okay, so what should we be doing about that sentiment as far as our recommendation, in your opinion?
Well, first of all, we're not making recommendations at this point. We're giving us a couple more, a couple, a couple of weeks in order to get some public comment, is that correct?
We, we are, we have to tell the county, actually, probably tomorrow, but we won't be, we won't be voting.
My personal preference is, even though I didn't vote that way at the PAC, the point is, the strongest majority of any of these urban areas around us supported not, the support was, you do not designate that area as a rural reserve, and you do not designate that area.
The Henrissi corridor.
Including the Henrissi Road, you don't designate it. That was the majority. And, you know, I think we can deal with these, in fact, I think, our city manager at one point where we had some issues on Finnegan Way, which is right outside the city, where, that we ultimately might have some difficulties, is we should be able to develop mechanisms where we can permit them to tie into our, into our sewer facility without necessarily getting annexed. And I think, I would prefer to explore something of that nature, as opposed to going to that hot-button area as to where do we buffer Beaver Creek from the Oregon City community.
And the reason, when we drove it, it, as I said, it's very urbanized, and we, and the lot lines the planning department drove are only around the urban areas. There's almost not much room for too much subdivision in that section. And I think probably, this is another one that over objections, likely will be designated. So, Tim.
I just wanted to, if you look at the factors, and politics is not a factor in pure planning sense, okay? Beaver Creek actually comes out the highest, and not only the Henrissi area, but all the way down.
Good for you. Now good.
Because, sweet, now for a commercial break. Not only because it's flat, but it's easier to serve, you have a good potential connectivity between Beaver Creek and 213. And, you know, you look at those factors, it comes out high, and when you look at the criteria, protecting a rural community is not a criteria, but obviously, it's factoring in.
And I suppose there's not a slippery slope criterion.
Not, not, not.
Safe slopes, though.
The, first of all, most of that area, even under this picture, has been taken out for consideration.
Right.
If we were to go that direction at all, then we would need to be talking about something like Oregon City doesn't want to become involved, that Beaver Creek then forms its own city and sets its own destination, and we don't even become involved. I think our discussion is, what can Oregon City serve?
Serve.
And so what, what do we recommend in terms of what Oregon City is willing to serve? And it doesn't take in all those factors into, into account. It also includes a sense of place, which should be on.
The one thing about, the one nice thing about the area right now that's on the map is we can serve that gravity, the sewer gravity.
Well, if you go to the, I think, frankly, if you go to the other side of Henrissi Road, you will find that you've dropped out of the Colfield Basin. And so I think you'll have to have some gravity connections to some of that area. Oh, I think so. I think, we've seen, we've seen the drainage maps over there, and.
It's just a little bit over there.
No, but you're going across Henrissi Road, and some of that area drains into, drains into another watershed. It would not be a problem to pump that a little bit, there's not much of an elevation issue there. But you, but, but it, I don't think it would be all gravity, frankly, for those properties that you're indicating.
Dan, another question for you, if I may.
Oh, sure, go ahead, Jim.
These, the, the green coloration for rural reserve, in some places, it actually follows drainage corridors. And it, and for rural reserves, are, is the sensitivity of a water course part of the criteria, criteria for?
Well, one of it is protecting natural landscape features and environmental considerations, so that's why, why you see that.
Okay, so is that Abernathy Creek, that, that big green area to our east, or is that Newell Creek? No, that would have to be Abernathy Creek out there, right?
That's Abernathy, and some of it's.
And Thimble.
And Thimble.
And some of it's.
And you've got Potter, and you've also got Potter and Holcomb Creek that flow into, and that's, that's up near the Park Place area, those both flow into Abernathy.
And the reason, the other, I thought you were going to ask, why are, why is the edge of the rural area these nice symmetrical curves?
Oh, yeah.
And that's, that's an arbitrary three-mile.
Yeah.
Limp circle at the county.
And what'll happen as, as we begin, as, as the planners begin to drill down after we do the broad generalizations, is that I think these all become lot lines, don't they, on the edge?
They sure should.
I think, I think that's.
That's our position.
I mean, so, so they'll be jaggedy, they won't be.
Neat.
Yeah, neat and tidy, so sometimes they'll go in, sometimes they'll go out, so. Yeah, Tim?
Next question, I have a location here, down along the Clackamas, or along the Willamette, near Canema and to the west. That, what's the thought there as to making that area rural reserve as opposed to urban reserve from Canema to that, in that direction? It's a flat area, it's easily trans, this piece here sticking up the little island.
Down to New Era?
Oh, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, why would that, why would that not be considered urban reserve as opposed to rural reserve?
Part of it was the steep slopes and getting the connection from the plateau along South End Road down to.
But could, even, I mean, Metro's.
At the bottom of the slope, there's a fairly flat, I mean, you've got opportunity, I would think, there. Could we move that, that line? I mean, and was that considered?
It was.
It was considered.
It was considered. Frankly, I think if you do that, then what you're doing is inviting a major traffic movement down directly to 99E, and then you're going to, it's already impacted, but where, where, in fact, South End drops into 99E, they're not going to come south in the other direction, they're going to go down that way. And so you're going to, you're going to be putting more urban pressure on 99E outside our urban growth boundary.
And Tony, you identified one place that a possible road could be built, but it's way, way down there.
Yeah.
Way down there.
Well, but to, to, I understand what you're talking about, but, but on the other hand, everything we're talking about is going to put some kind of pressure on our transportation system.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't look at that and say, no, that doesn't make sense. We need to have a plan. I agree, and we're looking further down the road here, and I think that's, that's something that I think we should keep in the urban reserve. I think it makes sense, I think it's, I understand the bluff, and that, but you do have a lot of opportunity down there for, for some potential growth in some, industrial or whatever you want to do. But that, I think, should be kept in the urban reserve.
But maybe in the next discussion, because I think, I think there, that frame is long left in station, that's very, pretty a strong consensus for rural.
I think the only thing we requested, actually, was the ridge areas based on property owners that were right adjacent to where we were, and.
And in these little teeth areas that I call, there, there are definitely some willing property owners that want some of that parkland and housing.
Sure, well, this space, this is unused space now, I mean, in my opinion, there's nothing there.
Well, we haven't done our concept plan down here either, so.
Right, so that's something I think we should need, need to keep on the table, and.
Let me just remind you that we have a different, that there's a change in process. I think there's pretty strong agreement that it will be, that you do a, I have no idea the mechanism, but you do a concept plan now before you bring anything into the urban growth boundary.
Mm-hmm.
The different process, so that you have to have an idea of where infrastructure is. Uh-huh.
But if you don't have, if you've not identified that's a potential urban reserve.
No, then you don't study it.
And you don't study it, and that's my issue. I think you need to have it as an, partly as an urban reserve, so you can study it. And, and you could choose not to do anything with it, leave it as an urban reserve, but we're, we're not talking about a huge property here, I mean.
Yeah, I hear you, but I think these, we've identified, will give us plenty of work on into the, for my grandchildren.
If I might, if I might interject here, when we had the last urban growth boundary discussion that led, in fact, to the, to that expansion that we did, we have not yet master-planned, that was actually, bringing that in was actually a recommendation from what was then the executive director of Metro. Our planning staff argued against it because, in fact, sewer issues and the elevation. Even those aren't, aren't all steep slopes, there's a fair, there's a fair elevation drop into the areas that you're talking about. And the city staff actually requested that that particular area be pulled out. In fact, it was directed, IMPACT directed it to their technical advisory committee, in which Dan sat on, and the technical advisory committee suggested that that be pulled out because of those considerations. Am I correct in that answer?
That's right.
Well, sewer runs right along there. I guess I'm, I mean, I understand, I.
C.R.W., yes.
I mean, sewer's there, transportation is there, if you look at the criteria, it meets, it meets most of the criteria, you know, and I just think, we're pulling a lot of property down south where we have potential for, for employment, and we're taking it out along, up by the college. I think we have to have some opportunity there. I, we have, we've got to have it somewhere, and that's a nice flat spot. I'm talking about this piece here still, yeah.
See, I posit that when we do the concept plan in South End, that that's, there are going to be some neighborhood services there, I think, which, and maybe that sets it up for the next 50, I don't know.
But if we set it as a rural reserve, do we not lock that up?
For 50 years, so it's the, it's the.
Well, I think it's going to be designated. It's going to set it up.
Yeah, I'm not positive this is correct. Is this undesigned, or is this rural?
Are you talking about, you're still in Canema?
Yeah, the whole south of us, is that all rural?
That's rural.
It is all rural.
That's all rural.
So, yeah, yeah, no, it's, it'll be locked up for 50 years.
So it's locked up even if it's undesigned, undesigned?
No.
So why designate it?
Yeah.
So why don't we leave it undesigned then?
There's a little finger in Canema that's not better.
I mean, you have, you want to have some flexibility, and 50 years is a long time, but you want to have some, it seems to me that you'd want to have some flexibility in industrial, in, in, in jobs, but the opportunity for that, anyway.
Yeah, and am I not correct that some of that is designated greenspace, metro greenspace land as well?
Yeah.
So we'd have the same argument we had at Newell Creek, if we designated urban, you'd have the greater protection in that area for environmental, correct?
Well, except it's along the river, and it doesn't have the squeeze of, of density against it quite as much because of the way it sits, so we'll need to look at that.
This is different.
Yeah.
But I don't think this round, it's going to be there.
Could Doug speak to that based on the information in the PAC, and I'm looking at page 19?
Sure.
The recommendation and rationale says only designate bench areas as urban reserve, so I'm wondering how that translates into how the actual map will end up. Did you have that discussion in the PAC?
Well, we did have that discussion in the PAC. And, and actually, the map, the original map that was pulled out had the area extending down South End Road quite a bit, and that was pulled out.
It was pulled out.
It was pulled out.
Mm-hmm. So, I mean, the, 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 the planning staff actually presented a second map that included what essentially was requested by the city, which are those green areas that we show on this map.
Well, let me just...
No, that was discussed.
If the city commission does hold this over for a couple of weeks, maybe that's something that our planning staff could look at and address and review, because we're talking about, I think, things we haven't studied very much.
I mean, I, I think we probably could make recommendations on rural reserves where there was in fact an area that we were looking at both directions, yeah.
Okay.
As to whether, whether it should be neither.
Yeah. Well, I think, no, it wasn't exactly. We will go another, because we do need to, I guess, we need to know what to, you know, let the county go forward with. Are we, are we okay with these recommendations? Jim?
I, I gotta say, I really appreciate the discussion tonight. It's really been informative, and it's allowed me to come to my own personal conclusion on all of this. Everything the mayor described regarding Newell Creek, the so-called brain of Forsyth, I'm okay with the area just east of Newell Creek. I, I'm of the opinion that Henrissi Road should not be an urban reserve. But that's, that's the only thing, I think I have a differing view from what, what you've described tonight.
Daphne?
So, Dan, your, the growth projections did not include the brain area on Forsyth?
I removed the brain.
You removed the brain, and you...
Total bottoming.
Total bottoming. And, and you, there isn't much in Newell Creek there. We were just talking a couple bluff top pieces, and they included the buffer one lot deep off of Henrissi.
Yes.
And, but they did not include off of South End here? They did, even those central...
Oh, the, the plateau areas.
Yeah, the plateau.
Yes. They were concerned.
Not really off South End, but...
And how about the country villages, white piece here?
Yeah, we included that, Alice.
Okay.
Yeah, that's in the recommendation.
Well, I, I don't want to sell ourselves short, so I, I think that that sounds reasonable to me.
Any other ins or outs?
As urban.
Questions or anything? Okay. Tim?
I, I think Henrissi, that should be included, and my only concern would be this stretch now by Kenema, that we should reconsider.
And I'm in agreement with Tim. I, I think taking out the brain and the Henrissi and all that, that makes sense, to the extent that that sounds good. But, but I am not that comfortable with the, with the urban, I mean, a rural reserve designation in some of that area, just intuitively to me, doesn't make sense. But I don't, I mean, I understand the train is, is down the track. Kenema section? Yeah, absolutely.
Kenema section, okay.
You can put me on that one, too.
You know, I'm not sure what you're asking, but not having a rural reserve design, designation or having an urban reserve designation.
Well, either leave it in, undesignedated.
Or undesignedated.
Or make it urban reserve.
That's right. That, that would be my, my position.
Well, we'll have to kind of explore that, because...
I'd like to...
Jim?
I'd just like to respond to Tim and Chris, because it seems to me that, given the proximity of that area to the Willamette River, the same rationale about avoiding the brain because of its adjacency to the Clackamas River, to me, would, would also apply to that area immediately adjacent to the Willamette River.
Let me say that it's a significant step of moving into the Beaver Creek drainage as well. We, yeah, Beaver Creek comes right, 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 right there.